Good evening, everyone. I would like to call on November 4th, 2020, meeting of the Michigan City Council Council to order two things, please sign this, all electronic devices and a stamp or a pledge. I believe you said a pledge and a sign of prayer.
For 2020's blue flag of the United States of America, two to three votes, one to one, eight individuals, individual, without being just a small girl.
President. Mr. Fitzpatrick? Present. Mr. Mack? Present. Ms. Dyche. She's on the phone. President. Mr. Don Prespolinski? Present. Mr. Paul Prespolinski? Present. Mr. Simmons? Present. Ms. Giegus? Present. And Ms. Tillman? Present. We have nine present and no one absent. Thank you, Ms. Niall. Approval of the minutes. Second, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of our October 20th meeting? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye if I say aye. All opposed, same sign. Minutes approved. Our reports of standing committees. Councilman Dabney?
Yes, sir. All right. The Finance Committee meeting, November 4th, is called to order at 6:09 PM. I adjourned to review claims filed since our last meeting. Committee members Tillman and Dabney were present, as well as council members Giegus and Simmons. City Controller Yvonne Hough Masterson was in attendance, as well as city attorney Jim Meyer. Claims reviewed totaled $2,283.50 from the approval fund, $0.00 from the Boyd Development Fund, for a total docket of $2,283.50. There were no other issues discussed in the meeting. Councilwoman Tillman moved to recommend approval of the docket, with a second by Councilman Dabney. The motion was approved unanimously, 2-0. On a motion made by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilwoman Tillman, the meeting was adjourned at 6:18 PM. The summary of claims are as follows. Riverboat Fund, Ace Auto Body Service, $175. Cloverleaf Garage Inc., $150. Enterprise Rent-A-Car, $1,209.10. Haas and Associates, $749.40. For a total approval fund of $2,283.50. And once again, there was no money expended from the Boyd Development Fund for a total claims docket, once again, of $2,283.50. And that concludes the Finance Committee minutes for tonight's meeting. Thank you, Councilman.
Claims docket. October 20th, 2020, Riverboat Claims Docket. Fund 2042 Riverboat Claims, $2,283.50. EFT, 0. Fund 2031 Boyd Claims, $0.00. For total claims, $2,283.50. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Dabney. And a second by Councilwoman Tillman. All in favor, signify if I say aye. All opposed, same sign. We have one thing and eight ayes. Reports of special and select committees. This afternoon, the Health and Public Health and Safety Committee met in regards to the ordinance to repeal ordinance 4546. This, uh, Councilwoman Dyche, you have to report for...
Yeah, so I'll prepare my written report. We had our meeting this afternoon and Park Superintendent Shannon and Assistant Superintendent, Shannon Easton participated, along with the committee of Michael Mack, myself, Sean Fitzpatrick, and then council member Paul Chris Polinski were there as well. And so I'll have a written report for the next meeting, but the recommendation was not to make a recommendation to the council, whether to recommend or not to repeal that ordinance. So I'll have the written report submitted, but the recommendation was basically not to offer a recommendation to the council.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Reports of other city officers and departments, petitions? There were no petitions this evening. Communications? Correspondence was received in the clerk's office regarding a notice of tort claim from Ken J. Allen, Law Group LLC. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on October 22nd, 2020, from Mayor Duane Perry, regarding his veto to ordinance number 4548. With the correspondence, I will read it in its entirety. Dear Members of the Council, as reviewed the subject of ordinance 4548, I am saddened to inform you that I have to veto this ordinance for following reasons. First, the ordinance identified one of the employees to come to the welfare and work program, an entity that no longer exists, clearly documented in ordinance 3914, placed in effect March 4th, 2014. Secondly, there are two agencies listed in the ordinance that are incorrectly identified, Minority Health Coalition and the Michigan City Hope. Minority Health Coalition in 2018 changed its name to Community Advocates of Northern Indiana, as documented by ordinance 4472, and placed into effect April 9th, 2018. There is no organization by the name Michigan Hope. Its legal name is Helping Our People Excel, which goes by simple abbreviations, H-O-P-E. Also, my review of all documents related to the mission on social status of African-American males, since its inception, indicate the intention of the Michigan City Government has been maintained as close as possible as equal number of commission members appointed by each entity, the mayor and the council. This ordinance amendment violates that intention, having nine members appointed by the council and only six from the mayor. Finally, if the council increases the membership of the commission from 13 to 15, which is not reflected in the approved 2021 budget, you will be responsible for the first budgetary over expenditure 2021. Please consider my comments before you proceed with this ordinance. Thank you, respectfully, Duane Perry, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to override the veto. Second. We have a motion and a second. A motion by Councilwoman Tillman and a second by Councilman Prespolinski, Paul. Attorney Myers, do we need to discuss this or we just go to the vote?
Does anyone from the council have anything to add or any concerns about this?
Councilman Dabney?
If we override the veto, then it goes back to having entities that are not and no longer exist in that. We have another one coming up on first reading tonight, if I'm not mistaken.
That would be to make the corrections stated in the mayor's correspondence to us.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So if we override the veto, it goes back to what was vetoed, which had institutions in there that do not exist.
So those were basically clarifiers and the amendments that were introduced will correct all that. Uh, Councilwoman? Uh, thanks.
If I could add something to that, um, so the two that are... So there are two defined amendments that are on the agenda. One is if there should be to override and the other is if there isn't. So I have to put them both on the agenda and then I'll have to... It would have to be, whatever one we don't use would have to be withdrawn. So, um, that's the only reason. And there is no impact by it being incorrect at this time. There's not a financial issue or anything. So there's really, um, there's no risk by repealing it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments from the council? I just have one quick comment. So it did seem like it was just a few misprints, like the one where it was an abbreviated name of Hope, where it was Helping Our People Excel, and not the abbreviation. And the other one was just an organization changed their name and we weren't updated as far as that went. And the ordinance, the way it was amended last time, did pass the council with a 9-0 vote to begin with. So those are the only things that were really what the mayor addressed. And the budgetary overrun that he's speaking of is for meeting attendance, which I think the commissioners get a $50 stipend per meeting. So if a newly appointed commissioner attended all 12 meetings, it would be a total of $600, I believe. So I think that's the budgetary overrun that the mayor was implying to. So those are the only things that I know that were really addressed with his veto. So... Is there any other discussion? Councilman President Massey?
I, uh, this is on, you know, passed on third reading, like you said, President Fitzpatrick. And up until that time, were there any contacts by the administration on problems with this ordinance? Councilwoman Tillman?
Um, only from the commissioners, the commissioners of the social status, where when I came on in 2019, there was a total of 14 commissioners, when the bylaws clearly had stated 13. But other than that, up until recently, as far as administration, there was, um, a letter dispersed to the individual, where there was a unanimous 9-0 vote for the applicant that applied for the social status. And that letter that went out was, uh, is sent out by Mayor Perry to that individual, stating that there was an invalid, um, appointed to the commission, to the social status.
Okay, my point being...
No. Yeah, you mean like from first reading, second reading, third reading, was there any input up until after it passed?
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's what I was getting at. There was no input by the administration on this thing until after it passed.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Giegus?
I just have a question. So when this ordinance was drafted, if those organizations didn't come to you to ask to put people on there, how did you come up with the organizations? I just don't really understand how organizations that don't exist got found this in the first place.
Those organizations have always been on the commission's, I don't know, since its inception or throughout the course of its existence, but throughout the course of it, there's been some name changes. So they didn't update the city and say, hey, we call ourselves this now. So they would reflect that in the ordinance.
But the commission is larger now, is that correct?
The commission is actually smaller than it was originally.
Okay. I just was kind of curious about how this got on the resolution, you know, the ordinance.
Yeah, sort of like, you know, the Women's Commission has represented us from different organizations, so that's how the makeup of the commission is.
So the name should have been changed, basically.
Yes. At the point when the organization changed their name, they should have notified the city that it wasn't called, you know, X, Y, Z anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments?
Just a question. Were the members and the other commissioners spoken to in regards to the changes that were being made to the ordinance? Did they have any input?
Uh, Councilwoman Tillman. Councilwoman Tillman is the liaison.
Um, yes, we actually just held our commission's social status meeting last Wednesday.
And they're in favor of expansion?
As anything that any ordinance or resolutions that has been brought forth, the proper protocol of formalities was implemented and notifications were sent out. I also sent out an additional email to the vice chair and to the secretary to invite them, to let them know if they had any questions or concerns on the first reading and when they should have been in attendance, but unfortunately, no one was able to attend at that time.
And this is a statewide organization as well. What's the last, you guys, last name, Garrett?
Mr. Garrett was also at that meeting via telephone.
And he was fine with the expansion as well, because they started the organization.
Um, Mr. Garrett did not comment either gay or male, but he did send a letter stating the, um...
A letter of support.
A letter of support, thank you.
Michigan City chapter.
Of expansion.
Not supposed to... He didn't address the expansion. It wasn't a concern. They didn't understand what we were doing or if we were trying to limit the members or whatever. So once they realized it, they sent their letter of support as well as the current chair, what was the vice chair at the time when this first was being discussed?
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other council comments? Ms. Niall, on the vote, please. Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Dyche?
Uh, I'll miss you.
Um, Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Ms. Giegus?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and one opposed. Thank you, Ms. Niall. Uh, Ms. Niall, our first resolution by title only. A resolution of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, granting PHM Brand LLC an assessed valuation deduction tax abatement for decretable personal property pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1, 1-12.1. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Prespolinski and Mr. Fitzpatrick. Uh, does the author have anything to add at this time?
No, I was wondering if Mr. Holtz wanted to address the council on this abatement.
Mr. Holtz? Please state your name and organization.
Good evening, Clarence Holtz, EDCMC executive director. Welcome. Thank you for being here. I'm here today to highlight this company. They came into the building two years ago with a project to hire over 15 new employees. They're in the process of doing that. Today, they're looking to do an expansion with a new building and hiring 15 new employees for. Great company. They, we were in the middle of a state where they came to hemp production. I was happy, like, one week accompanied in southern Indiana. So this is the second company in the state that was allowed the license to do that. Great company, great, good jobs, great benefits, doing very well here on Highway 12. And so Mr. Scott Freeman is here to answer the questions. And the company is still is the VP of Engineering, working to get the new building built. But I think I sent the council sponsors information to the company in terms of taxes being saved, what they'll be paying over the next seven years, what they're saving. But as all the people, even though they're getting a tax abatement, they're still paying taxes over that time period. And I think I had an estimate it was over seven years, they'll save over $212,000. But at the same time, they'll be paying $250,000 and then at the end of seven years, they'll still have to be in charge altogether. So I think it's a great investment in the city. Questions, comments? I don't know, how is Freeman, I guess, the captain?
Any questions? Sorry. Any questions for Mr. Holtz? I just have a comment, and that's, uh, these are going to be 15 additional jobs at this, uh, plant.
Yes.
Is there anybody here on... This is a actual hemp processing area, correct?
Yes.
And this is how the business of hemp is creating jobs. So, and I just wanted to say that a lot of people don't know that, we're kind of behind in the state of Indiana, because Purdue is holding it up for some reason on people getting their licenses to grow hemp. And I know that there's a big, big market out there. They can use some fabrics and all kinds of stuff.
We had a seminar about two years ago, we were running a lot of farmers from within 30 miles, and PHM and Purdue, folks were there to talk about how to grow hemp. You have to go through a process to get a license through Purdue University of Lafayette. It's a cash crop. And, you know, I know companies who are growing hemp are also using the refuse to make an Othie, make wood, so there's a byproduct of hemp. So it's a very long-term for different communities. So I think this company has some great potential for doing other things in the future. Scott, answer any questions? I'm glad I have my head here.
Hi, I'm Scott Freeburn, Vice President of Engineering for PHM Brands. I can answer any questions if you guys have any.
Any questions for... What's your name again, sorry?
Scott Freeburn.
I have a very simple question. I just was going to ask where this place is, because it's not on the sheet that we've got.
So it's the old Pernova Plant down on 12. It's, uh, this sits right off the road there.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions? Is there any other discussion from the council? Or anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Any council comments? Motion to approve? Support? We have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Prespolinski and a second by Councilman Paul Prespolinski. All in favor of approving this resolution, signify if I say aye. All opposed, same sign. Ms. Niall, our second resolution on first reading by title only. A resolution by title only. A resolution of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, granting PHM Brand LLC an assessed valuation deduction tax abatement for real property pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1, 1-12.1. And this is also introduced by Mr. Paul Prespolinski and Mr. Fitzpatrick. The author have anything to add at this time?
No. I, uh, I just wanted to say that it's, um, I think we're, it's a good investment and this is the product of tax abatement on helping companies get that preliminary edge. So, no, I'm totally in favor of it. That's why I was sponsoring it. Thank you.
Kind of want to echo what Councilman Prespolinski said. I think it's a good addition to the community. So any, any one from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Any council comments? Any council comments? Motion to approve? Support? We have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Prespolinski and a second by Councilman Dabney. All in favor of approving this resolution, this resolution, signify if I say aye. All opposed, same sign. Ms. Niall, our third resolution by title only, no objection. A resolution by title only. A resolution of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, granting Heart Side Food Solutions LLC an assessed valuation deduction tax abatement for decreable personal property pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1, 1-12.1. And this is introduced by Mr. Mack and Mr. Don Prespolinski. Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Yeah, Mr. President, the councilman, the councilman President Massey? Uh, just have a few comments to make about Heart Side Foods. Two years ago, I did take a tour of the plant. I believe it was two years ago, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And it's a very impressive plant. Safety, production, cleanliness, it's a top-shelf operation. And Michigan City should be so thankful and happy that this company here is in Michigan City. And they came here 10 years ago, and since that time, they presently employ 379 people. Now, when we pass these two resolutions, and with the projects they have, they plan on hiring 50 more people after the completion. And they presently have a hourly wage of $20 an hour, which is fantastic, I think, for Michigan City, with the beginning wages of $16 to $19. And a very, probably one of the, probably the highest escalate or compliment I can say about the company is that in 2019, they were given the award as a Food Processor of the Year for 2019. And that's a national award, not a state award, but a national award. So that's something that they're very proud of. Michigan City should be very proud of to have a company like that in town. And in the resolution itself, this is going to be a $10 million project for this equipment to be brought here from other factories, the way I understand it, and possibly purchasing other equipment to be put online here in Michigan City. And moving on from there, if you go to page B1 in your packet, if you have it, it shows the breakdown of the abatement, and we're talking a five-year abatement, not a seven-year, not a 10-year, but just a five-year abatement. Uh, year one, they're going to pay 100%, year two, 90%, year three, 90%, year four, 85%, and year five, 80% of the taxes. So that's what I have to say about the company. I'm very happy to be able to sponsor both the resolutions.
If Councilman Mack has anything that he'd like to add? Let's... Councilman Mack?
I concur with everything Mr. Prespolinski just stated. I am generally all for all, especially large abatements and of this sort. The company, I pass it up every day, taking my son to work. But as far as I'm concerned with abatements, it's a way to stimulate, and this is for the public, because there's been some debate on these things sometimes. But in essence, it's a way to stimulate, incentivize, and entice jobs. Anything, I would love to be able to take this same logic down to a smaller scale and actually use that for our local entrepreneurs in a way. As soon as we can find out a way to do both, because I'm not going to not do one, because we haven't figured out the other yet. But this is a great thing. It's great for Michigan City. It's great for our future. And as soon as we can figure ways to incentivize, stimulate, and entice our local entrepreneurial base to get more involved and further their ideas and intentions, we'll be doing a big favor for the city. Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. President? Whoops. Mr. President?
Councilman President Massey?
Yeah, Clarence is here to speak on...
I have a comment.
...behalf of Heart Side. And the plant manager is also here this evening, Mr. Val Boletac, sitting there in a dark jacket and a blue shirt. You know, he'd be more than happy to answer any questions also.
Mr. Holtz?
Good evening, Clarence Holtz, EDCMC Director. Actually, we have two here on tonight on the agenda. One's for five years, and that's personal property, which is a benefit. And the other is seven years, which is the building improvement and renovation. So there's two separate resolutions, which we're going to do by law, just categories. But great company, been here 10 years, been growing. And one of the things that we do with this retention is, the same way that they are trying to get this, all the jobs here in Michigan City, this plant had to compete against other plants within the company system to bring the jobs here. So a lot of times when companies are expanding, they're actually competing within the own company. Okay, this job, these jobs would have gone to Illinois or somewhere else, they have the different plants. So we always work with the plant, the local managers, to make a compelling case why they should bring up production here in Michigan City, because they could take away jobs up here and send it somewhere else, too. So we're happy that they're looking to... So we're happy that they're looking to expand here and to grow within the community. If you ever drive by Ohio and Highway 20, all those smells great. So, we drive by and smoke cookies all the time. So just, Wolchek, anything you want to add?
Please state your name for the record, please.
Val Wolchek, my manager, the Michigan City facility for Heartside Food Solutions. And appreciate the council members hearing the resolution today. And we're very proud to be here in Michigan City and very much an advocate for what we're doing in the, in the local community and bringing jobs into Michigan City. And we're striving to be the best plant within our organization. And we're striving for best safety record, the highest quality, and lowest cost provider, and providing good quality jobs for the, for the community. So we're proud of doing that and then continuing our expansion here in Michigan City. And we, we appreciate everything that the, you know, Michigan City has done for us. And we want to also keep that expansion and keep providing good quality growth for the community.
Any questions? Any questions? Councilman Presswell.
Mr. Wolchek, when, when you guys, is it gonna break ground on a new area, or are you just gonna incorporate that into the building you have?
We're incorporating that into the current facility.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll come back.
I ride by here all the time, and that beautiful smell that Mr. Holts was speaking of. What, how often do they, what is that, how does it happen, and could you keep that running?
It's a, it's a challenge every day, but it's, you know, it's a great opportunity for us to provide products for large, major companies throughout, throughout the U.S. and then also internationally.
I just have one question. I don't know if you can divulge this, but what products that we may know that you guys produce there?
We do a variety of cookie, crackers, different bar type of products for major food companies. So as you're walking through the grocery store and you see products on the shelves, it's a good likelihood that we're producing some of those products for, for our major customers. And they, they do not like us to divulge who they are. But yeah, it's major products.
Gotcha. Councilman Dabney?
You know, trying to get in on the comments before they came up. That's okay, though. But just to piggyback off of what Councilman Mack said, and, you know, to stimulate business moving into Michigan City or expanding in Michigan City, everybody in the state is doing this. This is happening everywhere, so we're having to compete with other places in order to bring companies here. And there's that argument out there, well, you're letting them off the hook, they're not paying their taxes into the city. But that stair steps down over time, and eventually, we start to collect those tax dollars. And it's a kind of a misconception that the property taxes of the homes are what pay the freight in these cities now, but with the property tax caps that the state of Indiana has put on, it really is the businesses that pay the freight for us. So the more businesses that we can get here, the more that they can expand, the better our tax base is gonna be. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Any other council comment?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Presswell.
Second.
And second by Councilman Mack. All in favor of approving this resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Resolution carries. It's now our fourth resolution by title only without objection.
A resolution by title only, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Michigan City, Indiana granting Heartside Food Solutions LLC an assessed evaluation deduction tax abatement for real property pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1, 1-12-1. And this is also introduced by Mr. Mack and Mr. Don Presswell.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Mr. President, just a couple of things. This is gonna be a $3,600,000 investment for the real property. And the abatement is asking for a seven-year abatement. And to coincide with what Councilman Dabney said, as far as what companies during the abatement period, what taxes they're not paying, but there are taxes that they still do pay, okay? For example, in this particular project, although the company's gonna save a little bit over half a million dollars in taxes, they're still gonna wind up paying $866,000 in taxes in that seven-year period. So tax abatements are good. Tax abatements stimulate progress, expansions of business, hire more people, and hire people at good livable wages. Now, like Councilman Dabney said, some people may have an argument with that, but, you know, we are trying to promote companies to expand. People need to get the inspiration to go out and get those jobs, to be able to enjoy the benefits that come with these jobs. So, with that being said, I am in total support of this resolution also. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Mack, does your man can add at this time? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Any council comment? Any council comments?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilman Don Presswellinsky and second by Councilman Mack. All in favor of approving this resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, resolution carries. Okay, Ms. Nyle, our first ordinance on first reading by title only without objection.
In ordinance on first reading by title only, amending municipal code section 2-457, as amended by ordinance 4548, Commission on the Social Status of African-American Males. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman and Ms. Deitch.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Just that in regards to amending the social status of the bylaws from 13 members to 15 members. If I can read this, this will also answer some of Councilman Dabney's questions. It states, whereas Common Council has become aware that it is in the best interest of the City of Michigan City and the Commission on the Social Status of African-American Males Commission, that certain provisions of the Commission's enabling ordinance be amended, and that the Commission should take the necessary steps to amend its bylaws to incorporate the amendments. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of Michigan City, Indiana, that the provisions of section 2-457 of the Michigan City Municipal Code referenced below shall be amended to, read as follows. 1-2-457b2, the commission shall consist of 15 voting members. Each member shall be a resident of Michigan City and shall be appointed by the group or organization whom he or she represents within the Michigan City unless otherwise specified herein below. The appointment shall be made as follows. 2a, the mayor shall appoint seven members to a two-year term. Those seven appointments shall consist of members from the following groups as follows. Three appointments from the justice system. One member nominated by the county labor coalition. One member nominated by a neighborhood group association. One member from a workforce development agency, career tech center, or higher education institution. Five, one member chosen by the mayor. 2b, eight appointments shall be made by the Common Council of the City of Michigan City on a yearly basis and shall be members of or participants in the following groups and entities. One from the Human Rights Commission. One from the Minority Health Partners. One from the Swanson Center. One from the ministerial associations. One, Michigan City resident appointed by council. One from Helping Our People Excel, H.O.P.E. One from the NAACP. One member of the Common Council appointed by the Common Council. All other provisions of section 2-457 shall remain in full force and effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Deitch?
Yes, so, again, I know that Councilwoman Tillman just read that this is making all the corrections based on the things that were said in the veto. So we want to address any issues with the organizations and then also address the equity piece between the mayor appointees and the council appointees. So this is the amendment, amending what we just wrote, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Please state your name, man, just for the record, please.
My name's Andrew Steele, and I was covering the council at the time this was first introduced, back so many years ago. And mainly, the number of members that, if I remember correctly, that were going to be proposed was around 26 or 22. The zero, I think it's more like 26. I think, gentlemen, the number right now, up to 15, is too much. You're never gonna get a quorum. That's the problem with a lot of these larger boards and councils, is they're so large that sometimes a lot of members can't make it. And then you have to, you know, not have quorum. And that's, actually, that's kind of more of a waste of time for the members to show up, you know? So I feel that the number should be either 12 or a little smaller than that. Thank you.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, Andy's behind the camera. He films all the boards and commission meetings, so he would know personally firsthand. Okay, any other comments from the public? Any council comments? Any comments from the council?
Mr. President?
Councilman Presswell.
Yeah, I can, I can see the validity of the ordinance. Just one question, with the commission growing to 15 now, is the commission, apparently you probably feel this way, Councilwoman Tillman, but is it gonna be productive having 15 members come into a meeting? I mean, I don't know if, you know, that the commission is then broke down into subcommittees and then you have members have report back from the subcommittees on what's going on with this group of people over here. How actually is it gonna operate with 15 board members?
It's gonna function the same way as it was operating with 14 and 13. Those subcommittees, unless we have been notified by any of the boards, I'm sorry, any of the organizations, thus far to my knowledge, no one has recanted of being or having someone to represent their organization. So from that, we all, from these different boards, we all serve a purpose. We all then can have subcommittees. I myself have a subcommittee, which I do barbershop talk on child support. So everyone has something to bring to the table. And with that, then we're able to execute that and take that out into the communities to where we can broaden and educate other individuals and also provide them and direct them and to help them to give any type of assistance that they may need.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Any other council comments? This ordinance will be held for second reading. Ms. Wolchek, it's now our second ordinance on first, upon the first reading by title only without objection.
In ordinance on first reading by title only, amending municipal code section 2-457, Commission on the Social Status of African-American Males. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman and Ms. Deitch.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deitch.
I know Councilwoman Tillman will have to do it, because she would like to draw this amendment.
Yes, I would like to withdraw this amendment.
Is that all? Charlie Myers?
The author has to withdraw the first reading. Unless somebody else wants to pick it up.
You gotta ask if somebody else wants to pick it up. Okay. Does anyone else want to pick up sponsorship?
I would point out that it would make no sense, because you've already overlooked the veto. And not that an amendment incorporates these provisions.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. It's now our third ordinance on second, first ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
In ordinance on second reading by title only, amending the zoning map of the City of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana to rezone property owned by Homestead Company LLC, Green Acres LLC, and Pioneer Lumber Inc. from R1B and B3 to B2. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Mr. Simmons.
Do the authors have anything to add at this time? Councilman Simmons?
Yes, as I stated in our previous meeting, this was approved by the planning commission. This 293 acres will be designated heavy industrial use. It is part of a 426 acres of true administration. The rest will be residential and commercial. It is consistent with the Michigan City power history.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Barry McDonald. I'm an attorney here in Michigan City with offices at 601 Franklin Street. I don't need to go over my presentation from the last meeting. Just thank the council, thank the sponsors, Mr. Dabney and Mr. Simmons. Mr. Simmons was correct. 293 acres, essentially straddling Highway 20, kind of on the east side and west side, just south of Michigan Boulevard, kind of in the area of Swan Lake. It obtained our petition for the rezoning to take these R1B and B3 acres into M2. Got unanimous approval from the plan commission. And since that time, and since prior to and subsequent to the first reading, I know one of the reasons Mr. Dabney was concerned, that we want to make sure we heard from some public input, if there was any one way or the other. And I can tell you that neither any of my clients nor I have received any negative impact with regard to the- Thank you, Mr. Harris. Sorry about that. I'm usually loud enough that I don't need the mic, but I know you need the mic for the replay. But we haven't received any negative input, so I appreciate the additional time for all of the residents in the neighborhood to possibly weigh in on what they think about it. Certainly, my clients, Clarence at Economic Development, couldn't be more excited about it. It's been a long process to get here, get to the rezoning. We would then move on and deal with the next steps, which could potentially be a commercial subdivision, which could be Tiff District, which could be any number of things. But before we can make that happen, obviously, we have to get the rezoning appropriate for what the use will be. And even though the rezoning will be M2, which would allow for heavy industrial, the wave and the need so far out there, because again, if you recall at the last meeting, we had the commercial broker, Roy Rolke, here, kind of giving firsthand boots-in-the-ground experience about the people that are already interested in this site. Logistics centers and distribution centers seems to be the bigger need, and at least so far, seems to be the bigger interest in that area. And I'm sure Clarence is far more, far more on the front lines of that than I am. So if Clarence wants to add anything, by all means. But again, I appreciate you guys entertaining this ordinance and available- But again, I appreciate you guys entertaining this ordinance and available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Good evening, Clarence Hall, EDCMC Director. Just wanted to thank the council for intending this motion and definitely recommend to move it forward. I think the last meeting when we were reporting, I mentioned we had about 19 companies that came to us this past year and we could not accommodate them. If you look at their dues report this past week, a company announced imported, a company came and looked at us, they wanted 140,000 square feet. And what they make is, is an architectural company, so those are high-paying jobs, people who have to be architects or designers. They make the glass walls for corporate offices across the world. And so we could not accommodate them, so they went somewhere else. But they're looking for a first-class business park that has the roads, the water, the fiber that they can put a building in. And so those are kind of, we're missing, and we don't have a place to put it right now. And those are high-paying jobs. Those are jobs for designers, architects, engineers. And so this is key for us to get into those kind of companies that move through Michigan City. So we're hoping by next year we'll have the water and sewer lines mapped out, by the department heads over the past months, and we'll try to figure out how to get some funding to the fellow government to make that happen. Not sure how this is gonna work yet, but we're doing our part to make sure the city can move forward. And these are the heavy lift behind the scenes, this is gonna happen. So thank you for taking this and moving it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Anyone from the public which can speak on this ordinance? Any other public comments? Any council comments? Any comments from the council? This ordinance will be held over for third reading. Our second ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
In ordinance on second reading by title only repealing ordinance number 4546 entitled Establishing Rules for Attendance at the Use of Washington Park and Penalties for Violating Same for Violating Park Department Rules Concerning the Use of the Washington Park and the Zoo. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Deitch.
Now, this ordinance was tabled on second reading, Councilwoman, even on October 20th, until, until there was a health and safety related workshop held. Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Yeah, just wanna make a motion to take it off the table.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to remove this ordinance from the table. Anybody from the public which can speak on this ordinance?
Who wants to bar for reading?
Any council comments?
Well, you have to take it off the table before...
Oh, okay. So we just go straight to the vote?
There's a point in order, um...
Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Deitch.
Yes. Um, they're taking this off the table for, it's taken off the table for second reading tonight. And are they asking for third reading tonight or third reading at the next council meeting?
Next council meeting. Don't need to reiterate that, that motion. Make the motion to take it off of the table tonight on second reading to hold over for third reading.
So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Snyder, want to vote?
Ms. Tillman? Aye. Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Chris Patrick?
Nay.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch? Oh, she can't vote, sorry. Mr. Don Preswellinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Nay.
We have six in favor and two opposed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. So do the authors have anything to add at this time?
I have no at this time.
Anyone from the public which can speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public here to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public? Any council comments?
Mr. President.
Councilman President, let's go.
Yeah, if I may, I believe that this pertains to getting into this park discussion that we're gonna have here. And I know that Assistant Chief Dave Cooney sent out an email to everybody before the meeting, and I just want to, I just want to read a little bit of that email and how important that the police department feels, and the chiefs of the police department feel, that they need to sit down, we need to sit down with the parties involved and give a plan put in place. Not just a get rid of what we're trying to do here and forget about it and say, well, let the park department take care of it. Because apparently, the police department has concerns too, but they, I don't know how involved the park department has been with talking to the police department. So, if I may, I'll get it, there it is, okay. Uh, let's see. After speaking with Chief Campbell, we believe the best course of action would be to have a roundtable discussion with Director Shin, his personnel, and our command staff, and as how the park should be opened in 2021. So we have the police department asking them to sit down with the park department and us on how to do this. So they have concerns also. So it's nothing like the council's just trying to push us down on the park department or push it down on the park board just because we want to do it. I mean, we're wasting a lot of energy here, and what has to come out of this whole exercise is something productive for the city, for the park department, and for the police department. All right, let me just finish here, there's one more little paragraph. Oh, anyway, it says that the chief isn't available right now. He says, anyway, there are limitations on how to proceed without speaking with the park department, how COVID-19 will impact the spring of 2021, without making assumptions that could be incorrect, as well as our manpower concerns. So the police department wants to sit down and talk to the park department, and it kind of surprises me that the park department hasn't reached out already to the police department and say, let's sit down and have a talk and see what we got to do moving forward. So I just wanted to read that, get that out to the public, as far as what the police department feels as far as opening up our park in 2021 and to have procedures in place, written procedures in place, finite procedures put in place that we're gonna come up with here to get this resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, yeah, that email was actually sent while we were in the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting. So the MCTD were invited to that, they weren't able to make it, so that's what that was representing. But also, we do agree that there should be a more broad discussion versus what's actually been. And so, thank you, Councilman. Any other council comment? Councilwoman Jesus?
Yes, I did not get that letter. I just checked my email right now, and so for whatever reason, I'm not on the distribution list, so I would like to copy that, please.
You probably should, I know you've been having an issue for a while, so I'm trying to get ahold of you and see what your emails are.
Yes, there was an issue because my name was misspelled, but that means the email did not go to me. They purged that bad email, so I should be good if I'm on the list. So, let's try it.
Any other council comments? Any other council comments? This ordinance will be held over for third reading. Ms. Snyder, our third ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
In ordinance on second reading by title only amending Section 70-101 in Division 3 of Chapter 17 of the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding the Police Mayor Commission. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Preswellinski.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
At this time, I would request that the council keep this on the table. I'm trying to work out some issues on the background checks for the commission with the legal staff and the particulars on who's gonna do it, what agency's gonna do it, and I want to get that finalized and then get it into a amendment to put into the original ordinance. And I'm working with the city attorney and also input from the chief on this. So I would ask a request to keep it on the table till the next meeting, please.
Do you have anything on that?
Yeah, probably shouldn't, it's automatically off because you table it to the next meeting, which is tonight, so...
Okay, so he's making a motion.
He's making a motion.
Keep it on the table till the next meeting.
Okay. I'll second that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side? Okay, just to keep it till the next meeting?
Yep.
Keep it till the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Snyder, our first ordinance on third reading by title only without objection.
In ordinance on third reading by title only amending ordinance number 4546 to establish time period for implementation of rules established therein. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Preswellinski.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Well, I did not have any language to add, but I would like to read this at this time in its entirety, please. Or Gail would like to read it in its entirety.
Amending ordinance number 4546 to establish time periods for the implementation of rules established therein, whereas on September 1st, 2020, the common council passed ordinance number 4546 entitled Establishing Rules for Attendance at Use of the Washington Park and Penalties for Violating Same and for Violating Park Department Rules Concerning the Use of Washington Park and the Zoo Rules, which in paragraph number 1 through 4 establish various rules concerning the use of Washington Park, including at parking lots on the beach due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, that ordinance did not contain any time limitation for implementation of those rules and save the years for which park parking sticker rules are admitted. And whereas, the common council finds that it is in the best interest of the city, in particular of the park department and the citizens of Michigan City, that the implementation of the rules in ordinance number 4546 be limited to the period of time each year during which the park department allows open access to Washington Park Beach. Now therefore, being ordained by the common council, the city of Michigan City and EM, the rules set forth in paragraphs number 1 through 4 of ordinance number 4546 only be implemented and enforced each year during the time period of the year when the park department allows open access to Washington Park Beach. And during these times, special events access will be limited to only holders of park parking stickers for that year. This ordinance is to be effective upon passage by the council on proof by the mayor. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Preswellinski.
Mr. President, if I may, in the workshop tonight, we talked about various aspects of this ordinance and the amendment. And I would like to point to the first whereas, that these rules were established with concerning use due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And also in this is that some council members were talking about a sunset clause in this ordinance. So I asked Mr. Myers to come up with some type, and I talked to the park department specifically on what they considered their peak season, which is what's stated in the ordinance, the second week of May through Labor Day each year. And they're not enforcing anything right now, and they don't any other year. But with the, with the passage of this amendment, there would not be a active law on the book only enforceable, not all year round, but only during their main season. So that means that the park is open to everyone like it normally would be, but during the peak season, we're gonna have some kind of rules down there. But also, as discussed at the workshop, we'll have more time to get more input and iron this thing out. And I would like to reiterate the fact that what Don, Councilman Don Preswellinski brought out, the fact that, yes, I went and contacted the police department to get their input, and that I respect and I want their input, but that by totally eliminating the ordinance because, see, this has brought their concerns of managing these events up. And the chief was very appreciative of the fact that I contacted him to get his thoughts on it. So I think it's only in our best interest in the park department, in the administration, to sit down with the police department and hear their concerns and move forward with making the park a safe place during this period of time in our lives. And I'm not trying to over-regulate somebody or, in my own, I have true concerns about what's going on down here and managing it. And I think that by just eliminating this ordinance, what are we doing? Sticking our head in the sand and think it's gonna go away? Because the point is this. You all read their plan of reopening, correct? Has everybody got a copy of that yet? So that wasn't even put in front of the board yet to vote on it or even have a discussion from what I'm aware of. So I think that we should stay on the course that we're going and pass this amendment and get, have our works, get some kind of roundtable going with the police department and work these, work these issues out. But with passing this, that eliminates any problem with saying, oh, we can't man the park, we can't man the gates, because they're not doing it anyway right now. And they're not enforcing any rules, because I was down there the other day and there was 15 cars from Illinois down there, okay? And there was, there was about 35 cars and 15 of them, because I went up and down the parking spaces and personally counted the plates. So this is, what you have to realize, and you really need to focus on this, our community is a point of interest now for all these people to escape their areas, areas of confinement. That's our park, and it belongs to the taxpayers of the city of Michigan City. And we can talk about, we can talk about the, they're down on their revenue, they're missing revenue. Well, we subsidize the park system all the time. That's been history. The park department's been subsidized. And their whole concern is one thing, is to pack more cars in that park on holidays so they can make money. And I knew that they were, they were, you know, like $760,000 that they have coming through those gates a year, cash. So I think that we not only have an issue with this, we have other issues down there that need to be regulated. So I hope that, and I want to apologize to Mr. Matt, because we had a conversation earlier, and when this thing was put together... earlier, and when, when this thing was put together, it was, I wanted to get something done right away. And Mr. Mack, I apologize to you publicly that, yes, we can work together and get these people, you know, together in on this, because I'm not sticking my head in the sand. And I don't want to be telling the park department what to do. But I will say this, we're elected to do a job and the residents of our areas are, are concerned. And it behooves the appointed officials to take responsibility for their actions or inactions. So, you know, we didn't have any, we didn't have any lawsuits about not letting people into that park. And that one was circulating in City Hall, that we were gonna get sued, that we were gonna, we couldn't do this. But what's one of the topics in their plan is to separate, direct quote out of the plan, to separate the visitors from the residents. I propose to restrict parking in Washington Park lot to residents with season passes and direct all visitors to Fetter's Alley parking area. So evidently, so evidently with their plan, they have no concerns on, because of the word visit tours. Visit tours mean people coming in from the outside, paying to get into the park. So, I mean, COVID's not going away. And you can sit here and talk about, oh, this is, we gotta get rid of this ordinance. COVID's not going away. It's spiking in all areas and we need to be ready. And I'm, I'm sorry that people didn't get on it right away, that we had to take action. But that's what we're here for. When we see a problem, we, we need to act on it. So I just hope that people can vote for this amendment and we'll work through the other issues before the park opens in the spring. But I, I would hope that we would be working on it all through the winter to iron out this stuff and have a meeting with the police department ASAP. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council comments?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Deitch.
All right. I know that you all received an amendment. I know it's on third reading. I'll say this, I wasn't certain about actually trying to even do this, but I just wanted to acknowledge that there was some confusion in some language in the amendment, in the timeframe, opening, closing. But I don't think my amendment is necessary, so it can disregard it, because Councilman Paul Przewlinski pretty much explained the amendment and what it means. So if it's interpreted differently by the park department, it's on record that, you know, Councilman Paul Przewlinski shared exactly the timeframe, this off-season, you know, is, you know, this will only be in effect during, you know, the peak season. He explained it, even though the language is different, maybe a little bit in the, in the amendment, but the intent is there. So I withdraw that, you know, it wasn't presented, but you guys received it, and I just wanted to acknowledge that it's not necessary.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right. Any other council comments? Any other council comments? Councilman Mack.
Without going into a lot of detail on the actual amendment, I just wanted to say, you know, there's no apology necessary, Mr. Przewlinski. I commend you on your aggressiveness and your desire to, to fix this thing. I'm 100% agree with you on, we're not, we shouldn't stick our head in the sand. I'm 100% agree with you on, it's our park. I am a residence-centered person, huge. And I have absolutely no problem if it's within my purview and authority telling our department or anybody what it's supposed to do, if that's my position to do that. But as we spoke, it just, I'd, I'd like to be able for everybody to come to the table fresh with this, with new and brand-new input and insight. And my question, just going out there, would, would after our meeting with the police department, would we be trying to fit their ideas into this existing structure that we've created? Or when we get the input from the police department and the park department put together and everybody get their heads together, I guess that's it. Are we fitting those great ideas into the existing structure? Or would we have to amend, 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 and continue?
Here's, if I may, Mr. President Fitzpatrick.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
My intent is that we pass this amendment so that the park can be used and not people from the outside kept from driving through our beautiful park during the light show also. And if, and if we don't amend it to specifically say what's in the amendment, that they're not gonna allow anybody, or they can, it doesn't mean they won't. But also, that I was made aware by my brother that the Salvation Army does a program down here during those cattle caves alikes or the winter light program. But yes, my intent is, is to get the police department involved and tell us their concerns so the park department knows it and the administration knows it. And we'll be there and we're gonna partake in it and put something concrete together, because this is just, I guess you can say, the perfect storm happened this year. And so now we see it, now we know what, what's there, and we need to do something about it. If we don't keep the ball rolling, it's not kicking the can down the road, it's moving the ball down the court and getting to our final game plan, bringing all the entities together and working it out. And sometimes I'm looking at it as, okay, we're the coaches now. So we gotta get everybody together and, and move forward, you know? That's, that's even a better description. Because I certainly do not want anybody to think that I'm nitpicking the park department or I'm, you know, poking, poking them in the eyeballs or something, you know? But I think for the safety of our community, and, and especially this amendment, that'll take care of the cattle caves alikes, the Christmas light show, and let the Salvation Army do what they want to do, and it'll give us time to get something that everybody gets input and agreement on where we're gonna go. That's my whole intent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments?
Mr. President, go ahead.
Councilman.
Councilwoman Zigus.
Thank you. I applaud you for, while your hard work you did on this ordinance, I just don't think it's flexible enough for us to use. And passing or failing this, that does not stop our cooperative effort, that we can go on forward and get together with everybody. I don't understand why this is such an outrageous thing to, to get together all the different entities that are concerned and, you know, discuss policy, discuss rules as we go forward in a flexible way. So I do plan on voting no, because I think this ordinance has to go away, we have to start fresh and start over, and yes, cooperate with everybody for the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Przewlinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to comment on what Councilman Paul Przewlinski was talking about in the Salvation Army, and with the signs that still, the three four-by-eight signs that sit at the entranceway into Washington, into Washington Park that says, only Michigan City residents, I believe, with 2019 and 2020 stickers are allowed to come into the park. Well, I don't even know why those three signs are there. There's no use to it whatsoever, because everybody in the world is going through that park. I think I have an idea why they're there. They're there because there's nobody on the gate. So I think the administration is thinking, well, we'll put signs out there and we'll kind of still be going with what the ordinance was asking for. But with the Salvation Army, what, and I've been involved with Salvation Army for three years now, and especially during Christmas time, last year what they started, and the city allowed them to do it, is to go down to the gates at Washington Park the night of the Christmas parade, the kitty parade they have, and then they light the lights in Washington Park. Well, then, as you drive through Washington Park, you can donate money at the entranceway. And last year, I participated in that and the Salvation Army made a lot of good money to be put to use in our community. And that's why I am fearful that if we don't pass this and get these signs moved away from that gate where it says Michigan City people only, then people that come from out of town might not go through that entranceway and may not donate to the Salvation Army. And I don't want to lose that opportunity, and I don't think they do, and I don't think the community does, for the good work, fantastic work that that organization does. So that's what the Salvation Army does down there. But the signage, the signage needs to go. We don't need that there. You got three signs, I mean, it's obstructing the entranceway into the park, you got a beautiful park down there, and then you got these three gigantic signs, like, you know, people can't read. If you want to leave one, okay, maybe, but you need three of these gigantic signs. And I, I had a talk, you know, I mentioned that to the mayor at the last meeting, and he just kind of looked at me. I said, I don't know what the reason for them are, but anyway. That's my take on the, the ordinance, why I think it needs to go through, get voted on, we sit down and work on it and get these regulations in place or out of place, whatever's gonna open that park up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any council comments? Councilman Mack.
You know, if I have this right, the amendment is, in essence, to make sure the festival of lights, Salvation Army things go on, go on appropriately now through Christmas. And it's not the original ordinance. I guess what I'm saying is, anything I can do to make sure, any vote that I can give to make sure that we don't impede, since we did vote this ordinance in already, I don't want to vote here to impede any of those organizations or the festivals at all. So I will be voting for this amendment, but I will maintain my desire to fund the entire ordinance, because if, if it goes forward, this shouldn't be, it shouldn't affect any of these organizations. So I will be voting yes on the ordinance, on the amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Councilman Dan.
So this, this is applicable throughout the busy times of the summer, correct? So when the salt steppers have their event in the middle of the summer and they come out to the park, and all those different drill teams come down, they can't get into the park, because they won't have a park sticker.
This undoes that. This will undo that.
This will undo that. So we get special treatment for it.
It takes away those restrictions and the limitations of the sticker policies.
Uh, okay. Mr. Fitzpatrick, if I could address that, please. Mr. Dampney.
Yes.
Hopefully.
Okay. Point one, please direct your question to me.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Is that hopefully, that by that time, we will have a policy in place that's mutually agreed upon everybody after all these different input sessions, that will take care of everybody's concern in this entity, the police department, the fire department, everybody, and the city administration, the city council, and the park board. But I think that we'll, we'll work that to the final end before the park opens in. I mean, this, this'll give a time period where it's specifically there in that ordinance, where by that time, I don't think, hopefully, we won't need that, because we'll have a policy in place that like was brought up tonight at the workshop, that we got a red light, we got a green light, and we got a yellow light on what we're gonna do down here at the park. So that's, I'm sorry, that's all I can, you know, go, go with that. Thank you.
And just, I'm sorry, Mr. President, just, this is quick, this is quick. And I think the operative word in what you just said was the word policy, not ordinance. Policy. We can come up with a policy for any happening, whether COVID jumps out of control, or like you brought up the shooting that happened, that can be coupled together in a policy. And the ordinance is just not flexible, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments?
I have one comment. It seems like, you know, we've been going back and forth with this, things like all summer since COVID first struck, and it doesn't seem like COVID's gone away, so got a funny feeling this won't be going away. I know that, you know, we have this ordinance in place already, and I kind of want to compare it to a cake. We already had a cake baked, now everyone wants to fight over what the ingredients should have been now that the cake is made. But when we were putting the ingredients into the cake, no one offered any suggestions. So at least we can do is maybe figure out what the decorations could be or what to put in the next cake. But this cake is already baked, so.
Ms. Nadel. Ms. Nadel want to vote?
Mr. Dampney? Wait a minute. We don't have a motion.
Yeah, Mr. President.
A motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilman President. Apologies.
I won't vote to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt by Councilman Paul Przewlinski.
Second.
And second by Councilman Don Przewlinski and Councilwoman Tillman. Ms. Nadel want to vote?
Mr. Dampney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Mr. Don Przewlinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr., Ms. Zigus?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have six in favor and two opposed.
I thank Ms. Nadel that we may have passed this. Ms. Nadel, our second ordinance on third reading by title only, amending the policy to allow percentage of revenue funds to be used to fund the city's operating expenditures from the general fund and dedicating 25% of the revenue revenues to increase the rainy day fund balance up to a minimum of $6 million. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
So this is amended version of the ordinance that I originally introduced back, I don't know, back in the summer as well, till late spring or something, just to put some safeguards in place to ensure that if COVID sticks around longer, or if something else comes around in the future, the city is not left with empty pockets and looking for funding for things. So this is a watered-down version of what I initially introduced, but after workshops and discussions with the controller, this is, this is what we agreed upon. So does any other author have anything to add at this time?
So again, this was, you know, after we had the workshop, we talked about, you know, if we would, you know, maybe channel it down a little bit instead of, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. That we would step it down over a longer period of time to allow the city to adjust. So I hope that, you know, everybody will be in favor of trying to create their rainy day fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comments? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. President. Question for Councilwoman Ziegus. I believe at the last council meeting that you had asked the city controller for information as far as what effect this would have on the city budget, I think in year two and year three. And did you receive any information? Because I know I didn't receive any information.
I did not.
You didn't get anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Any other council comments?
A move for the adoption.
We have a motion to adopt by Councilman Przewlinski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Don Przewlinski and Councilwoman Tillman. Ms. Nadel want to vote?
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch. Oh, she can't vote, that's right. Sorry. Mr. Don Przewlinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Ziegus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Name.
We have seven in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nadel. Third ordinance on third reading by title only, without objection.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending section 38-33 and section 38-34 of the municipal code to provide for emergency relief funds to city businesses. And this is introduced by Ms. Angie Deitch and co-sponsored by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
I thought you had it at this time.
Can you guys hear?
Yes.
Okay. I would just like, I ask for a name for this ordinance. This is a local thing that can be allocated or reimbursed to locals' office. So I hope that you support. This is something that the mayor and controller discussed with us and answered quite at the last meeting. The court. Oh, and also, there's a very short window time that businesses will be able to get this down, so there will be quite lots of application.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council comments?
Mr. President.
Councilman President.
Questions for the sponsors. What committee is going to be formed that's going to approve this funding? Who's going to approve the funding? A committee of three, committee of five, or the individuals that are going to be approving the money?
It's the revolving loan fund. If you look at the section that is being amended, I read it in the, I think at the first reading, but this is the revolving loan fund committee section of the code. So it's that committee that will handle that. And if, also, if you would like to participate, I don't think that would be an issue.
Okay, so that's not, because I don't see it here in the amended section 38-33, but you're saying that it was in the original ordinance?
Yeah, it's in the, who approves all of the funding in that section. It's the revolving loan fund committee. So we did not, we didn't create a separate, I didn't change anything in the ordinance around who makes the decision.
Okay, when you say revolving loan committee, are you talking the revolving loan committee that set up under the E.D. Economic Development Corporation?
Yes, and in cooperation with Yvonne Hofmaster, yes. But.
Okay, because there's like nine people on that committee.
And that's okay.
Okay. You got to have a quorum to do to approve this stuff, the way I would understand it.
Well, if that committee is never having a quorum, that's another problem.
Oh, I understand that. I'm just trying to make a point here and trying to find out who is going to approve it. And if that's in the original ordinance, and I, it probably is, but that original ordinance has been a while, so I haven't read it. Okay, we got that, and then who's going to make sure that, and who's going to go out and check to make sure that whoever gets a grant is going to do what they said that they're going to do? Are we going to have people to go out and physically look? Or are they just, you know, if they say, hey, we're going to buy this and that for our business?
No, no. This is a reimbursable program. They have to provide all the documentation grants. So if they go out and ask in PPE, they have to provide PPE before they can be reimbursed. So this is not a flat, like amount. They have to prove by whether they were closed for two months and had to pay insurance and, you know, rent at their building. This is a reimbursable grant program. It's not, they go spend money, and we have to go out and follow behind them. They have to provide everything outside.
Okay, so does that mean that they've already had to get the work done, and then they got to bring the receipts to the committee, and the committee approves the money?
That's correct. And there's a checklist that Yvonne Hofmaster, well, Hofmaster will receive with the documentation for the funding.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ziegus.
Yes, and you could ask Councilwoman Deitch, if we can, where is this going to be available? Because I know a lot of the merchants are very excited about this, and there's a very short time window, so where will this be, this information be distributed?
So the final application is ready. We just had to wait for this to be adopted. So tomorrow, it will be on the EDC website, and I will make sure it's on the Michigan City website, like on the council, and maybe the clerk, but also on social media, and maybe we could get the news dispatch or the payroll dispatcher, whatever it is, to do an article to put the information out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comments?
Mr. President.
Councilman President.
Mr. President. Yeah, at the last council meeting, and hopefully council members remembered that I had tabled, or not tabled, but voted against the third reading, because I wanted information on the PPE stockpile that the city would have, whereby, you know, would we have to reduce the amount from 150 to say 125 or 130, whatever PPE costs, you know, I don't know. But just so that the city would have a stockpile of PPE for at least six months going into 2021. Otherwise, if we don't have it, we're going to take the money out of the general fund if we don't get money from the state again, like we did with this fund. Well, I requested that information. The mayor was at that meeting, the city controller was at that meeting, and I did not get one bit of information in two and a half weeks. I saw that the mayor's administrative assistant sent out an email to the department heads. I got a copy of that. That was approximately a week and a half ago, so as the time for the meeting was coming closer and closer, and I'm trying to get information to make a, what I consider an educated decision here, whether we spend this money or not, that, then I went to go see the city controller on Monday after the Florida Works meeting. I went directly there to see if she had any information, and I was guaranteed that I would get information by this meeting on Wednesday, so that I would have it, so I could read it and share it with my fellow colleagues on what we have as far as PPE or what we don't have as far as PPE, to see maybe we got to ratchet back a little bit on the amount of money that we're giving away. So I just want to say, and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, this is all public knowledge. This is what, this is what happened. Because I, you know, I hear, well, you know, if you bring this stuff up at a council meeting, you're throwing somebody under the bus. I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. I'm a sitting city councilman requesting information to make an educated decision here on the monies of Michigan City, and I got no information. No information was provided to me. And I was patient. I didn't go down there. I wasn't bugging people for two and a half weeks. We even had an extra day because of the election that they could have gathered disinformation. And I got nothing, not even a phone call, nothing. So I am disappointed in that respect, as far as not getting the information requested by a sitting councilman from the administration. With that said, I just want to share that with my colleagues. I don't know if any of you would have been looking for that information tonight. And I know this is a very important ordinance, and I think it's a good ordinance, and I'm trying to make in my mind, you know, do I go ahead and vote for this? Because we don't know if we're going to need PPE or not next year, but if we do, it's coming out of the general fund, not unless we get money from the state, and I don't know if that's going to happen. So we're going to take it out of the general fund, okay? We didn't want to give raises to these people. We didn't want to do this over here, but hey, you know what? Since we didn't have the information to make a vote on third reading after I requested the information, then we're just going to go ahead and do it. And next year, if we need 20 or 30 grand, well, you know, we'll just take it out of the, we'll take it out of the Riverbowl, or we'll take it out, you know, general account somewhere. But yet, we're getting chastised to extend the Social Status Commission on two members for a total of, what, $600 a year for one member? So it'd be $1,200. I'm sorry, I mean, I just, you know, I just feel totally disrespected about trying to get some information and not getting it, and having two weeks to get it. And all you got to do, I mean, if they wanted me to do it, they could have gave me the phone numbers of 13 department heads that we have in the city here, and I could have called them all up within two hours and probably had the information myself. But I'm not doing that. I don't get paid to do that. We have people in the city administration that have plenty of time, I believe, to do that kind of work. So I just wanted to express my concern and my disappointment on not receiving any information that I believe was legitimate to get, to make a sound financial decision for the citizens of Michigan City. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Any other council comments?
I just have a question.
Councilman President.
For the, for you or Angie, is any company that got money before isn't eligible for this, correct? Like, if they got money through that.
Yeah, there's already, yeah, there's already restrictions on what this money could be used for, who's excluded from the process.
Yeah, the application of this, this money can be used for, and all, everything has to, they have to show proof of that. They also have to provide, you know, all of the information that the government states. So we made the application and updated it based on the standards for what the government needs for recording. So, yeah, everything is listed. The person receiving the money has to provide all documentation to be included in the package.
Okay, what I was concerned with is if any company received money through the CARES Act, that they're not eligible for this money, right?
Yeah, they're not eligible, you're right.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Any other council comments? Any other council comments?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt by Councilman Paul Przewlinski.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Tillman. Ms. Nadel want to vote?
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Mr. Don Przewlinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Ziegus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nadel. I finished business nominations. The council has one nomination, one appointment to the revolving loan fund committee term expires on 10/18/20. Incometh Pia Perro. Was there any other, any applications submitted for this position?
We received applications from Mr. Jay Neese and Ms. Pia Perro.
Do you really think that?
Councilwoman Deitch.
Yes, so per our ordinance and our code, it has to be someone in the financial banking field for that slot, and Pia Perro said that she would still like to be considered to remain in that position.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman.
I'd like to make a nomination for Pia Perro.
Support. I have a nomination in a second. Are there any other nominations?
I got a question. Is that, is that in the ordinance on that somebody has to be in the financial field to hold that position on the revolving loan? Is that in the ordinance?
Yes, so the seat that she replaced from the resignation was a financial seat that's outlined in the ordinance.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Nadel want to vote for it? There's no other nominees, so.
Exclamation.
Yeah, can we just approve this by exclamation? All the favors taken by, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign? Congratulations, Ms. Perro. New business. Therefore, our time of council has two appointments to the redevelopment commission. Term expires 12/31/20. Incometh John Sheets and Pat Kowalski. Okay, are there any comments from the public? Do you want to hear from the public? Any comments from the mayor? Any comments from the council?
Councilman Przewlinski.
I would, at this time, like this, thank the council members who wrote it for that amendment to, so we can keep moving forward on this and get a game plan together. I also would request a, is Angie our representative to the redevelopment commission?
Yes.
I mean, Councilwoman Deitch, excuse me. Could I ask that we have a workshop in the near, near future with their financial consultant and a, to go through all their financial information and where they are on their indebtedness and pay on their schedule and how much money that they have. I'm looking for an extensive financial report to the council, Angie.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. I'll make that question.
All right, thank you. Also, this week, just for a heads up, that, to let the council know that Don Przewlinski, council- that Don Press Valinsky, Councilman Don Press Valinsky and myself attended the Board of Works meeting this week where the contract was approved to, uh, give a lot of property away to the South Shore for all these different caveats. And I, uh, I was very discouraged that there wasn't even, uh, a period where there's a caption in there, a clause that, and I understand the Board of Works, that I didn't, I don't need that explained to me, that they sign all the contracts with the different entities. But in this day and age, I think that there should be more transparency in our government, and that was definitely not. That, for everyone's knowledge, that we, I personally just got the, uh, plan on the streets that they were closing and the ones that they were supposed to have, uh, cul-de-sacs on. But there were some, uh, things that were brought out at that meeting about traffic and, uh, you know, I, I, my brother Donald brought up some things about fire safety and, uh, how they're going to access. They haven't even run any programs or any tests on how they're going to get down some of these one-way streets. But what really, what really, really struck me when we had our initial workshop three weeks ago, that I asked the South Shore about reconfiguring some things in the plan, and they said, well, it would maybe set it back a year. So, the general public needs to know that we were bringing these things up and that they didn't say they couldn't do it. They more or less, to put it out there, we're, we're not going to do it. And the administration signed that agreement or okayed it. So, if you have a problem with the South Shore, you need to call the mayor's office and give him a piece of your mind. But you know what really struck me is when I looked at that plan and they gave all of Eleventh Street to them on the north side. All of Eleventh Street. The whole Eleventh Street's going to be one-way going to the west with two or three streets, uh, open. So, with that being said, I don't know how many feet it is, but I asked to find out to know how much they've spent so far from the redevelopment commission on buying some of this property and cleaning it up. And they have not, to my, uh, to, for me, they have not shown or said where our responsibility ends and where it really starts physically with the redevelopment commission. But just think, just think about that. They said they couldn't open Pine Street, but if you look at the plan, it's okay for the pedestrians to walk across the railroad tracks to get to the south, uh, passenger loading dock. So, I mean, it's, this is, I think the council needs to really examine this some more because they may mention the fact that, well, it was passed by a resolution at this point and this point. But you know what? That's just a feeling of the council. That's not an ordinance. It's just an idea. It's not written in stone. So, I believe that we, we need to look at this a little bit further, down, a little bit further, and quite possibly, uh, do something with it. Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any other council comments? Councilman Press Valinsky?
Yeah.
And Councilman Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, going back to my comments about the, uh, gathering the information for the PPE, uh, for public record, the city clerk's here, Channel ninety-seven's here, and I am still requesting the PPE information that the city is supposed to supply to me as a council member and that the city's going to know going into 2021 if we're going to need to buy PPE. And if we're going to need to buy PPE, then the administration better come up with a plan to buy it, but not out of the general fund. Uh, we're not touching that general fund. That's for the city, if we have to, we'll take it out of Riverboat money, but we're not touching that general fund because that's what was told to me by the city clerk. Uh, so that's my, that's my take on it. I still want the information. I'm going on public record that I want the information, so hopefully I can get it here within a week. And I will bring it to the next council meeting so every council member gets a copy of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Sarah.
Yes, just to get out public information.
Mike?
Uh, there will, just to get out public information, there will be, uh, free community testing of COVID-19 starting today, Wednesday, November the fourth. Uh, free COVID-19 testing is available to all members of the public regardless of symptoms. Children as young as two years of age can be tested with parental consent. Uh, registration is preferred. You can go to, uh, scheduling dot coronavirus dot I N dot gov for appointments. The location will be Michigan Township Trustee Office, twenty-six four one East Michigan Boulevard. Uh, there, there will be open Monday, Wednesday, Thursday from nine AM to seven PM. Tuesdays and Fridays, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM. And on Saturdays from eight AM to twelve PM. Again, this is, community testing is free. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Any other council comments? Councilman?
Yes.
Uh, I'd just like to make a, um, a couple of comments. I know that, uh, we're having, we're still in the midst of a presidential election and everyone's concerned about that. There are a lot of, uh, election surprises that happened locally, so I know that's, uh, weighing heavy on everyone's mind. Uh, just want to say, um, congratulations to those who were successful in making it through. Um, everyone who aren't satisfied with who was elected or what offices are held by whom. Uh, make sure you do everything you can next time, next go around to get people registered and make sure people are voting and hiring numbers to maybe offset some of that. Uh, one final comment I want to make, uh, over the last few weeks, I've been noticing there's a culture development of this, this bickering back and forth, and it seems like, uh, I don't know if it's coming from, mostly from the administration, from boards and commissions, uh, answering council beefs, but it seems like the council has, our meetings are being used to hash out, you know, uh, settling scores or personal problems with everyone. I just think that, you know, this isn't the octagon. We're not in a cage match. I think we need to exercise a little more decorum and, and deal with things more professionally. So, you know, we're here to conduct the city business, not to, uh, poke at each other or jab at one another to see who gets ahead. So, I, I'd just like to, you know, kind of put that out there that we want to, you know, be civil with each other and, and maintain a level of decorum. So, you know, as our kids are watching, you know, we're not ashamed of what's happening up here. So, uh, with, with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All the favorites, say if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Mean adjourn.